We'll call a committee of the whole meeting for the Elgin City Council for February 22nd, 2023 to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Dixon?
Here.
Good.
Here.
Martinez?
Powell?
Here.
Rocheberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Here.
Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of February 8th, 2023.
Move for approval.
Second.
Uh, move in second for approval, any corrections or additions? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion is approved, eight zero. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this evening we're leading off with two, um, initiatives, capital initiatives, that I think will be quite welcome in the community. Uh, Mike Poubens, uh, Public Works Director and Capital Engineer is here to provide information for the likely questions or, or approval that will be coming for this, along with Mark Malat. This is his initiative as well, too. The first item, Design Engineering Services with, uh, H.R. Green Incorporated for the U.S. Route 20, Long Common Parkway to Coombs Road feasibility study. We all know that U.S. Route 20 is a critical east-west transportation artery in the Chicago metro area, and its route's two-lane segment between Long Common Parkway and Coombs Road is increasingly, not increasingly, has been asked to handle the same number of vehicles that are used in the four-lane portion of the highway to the east feeding into it. The section of the corridor from Long Common to Coombs Road regularly experiences significant traffic delays, and the pinch point where the four travel lanes funnel down to two just east of Long Common Parkway creates an evening rush hour backup that sometimes extends east of Randall Road. U.S. Route 20 is under the jurisdiction of the Illinois Department of Transportation. And while I.D.O.T. is and is planning to devote significant resources to U.S. Route 20 in Elgin, the state agency currently has no plans for funding to expand capacity along this segment of the corridor. So, Mark Malat and Mike Poubens have taken the initiative to apply, to, to do the Design Engineering Services to, um, following the principles of the Complete Streets Corridor for developing a safer, inclusive, and more efficient roadway that better serves and balances the needs of residents, businesses, and commuters of this area. The Complete Street Law requires that bicycle and pedestrians, uh, pathways be included in the planning and development of these transportation facilities. This evening's initiative is seeking approval to, to create the preliminary engineering design so that Mr. Poubens and Mr. Malat can be applying, to start applying for grants. Did I leave anything left for you guys to talk about? All in favor?
All those blue marks on there.
Exactly. So, thank you, Mr. Poubens, thank you, Mr. Malat.
Thank you, Manager Kozel. So, yes, tonight, uh, Mark and I are teaming up to present, uh, a request to approve a feasibility study to look at U.S. Route 20 from Long Common Parkway to Coombs Road. So, the map you'll see on the screen shows the project location. Long Common Parkway is on the right side of the yellow line where that red arrow is pointing, and Coombs Road is at the left end of the line where the yellow arrowhead is at. So, that's really our area of study. Just to the east of this, uh, U.S. 20 is four lanes, and it narrows down there, many of you know. Uh, we have issues with, uh, residents who live on the north side of 20 trying to turn out to go eastbound on 20. So, that's an, an issue, just the, uh, much higher volume of traffic over the last few years. Uh, we have issues at Nestler Road, et cetera. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the engineering agreement process, then Mark will talk a little bit about the need and the goals for the project. So, typically you'll hear us talk about Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three slash construction. This really precedes all of those. We're gonna, we, we propose to do a feasibility study really to, to narrow down the universe of ideas that we think are possible, that are feasible. Once we get through this study, it'll prepare us to go into a full Phase One study, but just as importantly, it'll prepare us to sit down with the Department of Transportation representatives and talk about this project, talk about who the lead agency might be, us probably, talk about funding with them, and just try to find out what they are open to approving. This isn't a state-of-Illinois route, but, uh, as has been said, they, there aren't any current plans to do any major renovations in this section. And quite honestly, the need, we think, is, is preceding what we anticipate would be I.D.O.T. action. Uh, not because they don't care about it, but as you can imagine, their, their resources are stretched very thin as well. So, with this study, it's a proposal with H.R. Green, they've done quite a bit of work for us, a very qualified firm. Uh, they would look at a number of things, preliminary, environmental, traffic, safety. Uh, as Manager Kozel said, we're taking a complete streets approach to this, so it'll include, um, pedestrian, bicycling, bus transportation options. Again, it's not to say, it's way too early to say exactly what would be in our final proposal, but though, again, trying to narrow down the universe of what we think is feasible, and we can move forward on it.
Sure. Thanks, Mike.
So, Mike and I really started this conversation in earnest, uh, in May of last year, in one of those kind of sit-downs, talk about what are you working on, what am I working on type of conversations? And he said, you know, where, where are you really needing some, some help as it relates to transportation and road systems? I said, you know, it's long been on the radar, we've gotta do something about Route 20. And he goes, he goes, I can help you do that. And so, when he said, that's what we can do, we, we got the ball rolling, uh, he got us in touch with H.R. Green, they put together the feasibility study, and then we started to put together some numbers behind what it is that we anecdotally knew. Uh, as Mike, as Mike, um, alluded to, there's that pinch point that everyone knows that is just to the west of Randall Road, that's represented by that, that little less than arrow sign. And what is happening is about 28,700 cars are, are traveling on U.S. Route 20, and when they go from a divided four-lane highway west through that pinch point, they're funneled down to two lanes, but the volume only drops about 3%. There's still 28,000 cars that are being forced to go through there, and then the characteristics of the roadway change significantly when you go through that pinch point. Uh, you have several major residential subdivisions, as well as a very successful commercial node that are depending on U.S. Act, on U.S. Route 20 to be successful versus what you have, which is essentially a divided highway from everything to the east, all the way from, well past Shales Parkway. And so, the characteristics and the needs of that road have to change as well from what you see to the, to the east past Randall Road. So, um, what we looked at then was, well, how far should we look at this study? I mean, it would be logical that we might consider going all the way out to, out to the roundabout that we're talking about with Pingree Creek. Um, but you see that once you get to Coombs Road, the traffic drops by about half. So, in, in the interest of being fiscally responsible and tackling a project that we believe we could manage, we thought we would focus on at least the immediate need of this mile and a half. Uh, in addition to the traffic volume, because of the changing needs and the changing way in which people use the road west of that pinch point, uh, there's been a significant number of accidents. We reached out to, um, to I.D.O.T. and got their safety tier locations map. This, uh, maps critical intersections as well as critical road segments, and you may remember hearing the, uh, our first introduction of this type of concept when we were talking about the Thorntons over on the far east side of Elgin as it related to the Lambert Lane intersection. And you can see based on the 2015 to 2019 crash data provided by I.D.O.T., they've identified, uh, Shannon Parkway as a critical intersection, Nestler as a high-safety tier intersection. There's a problematic segment as you continue to go east, and even the Long Common and Weld intersection is noted as a medium-safety tier intersection. That's based on data that's already four years old. I.D.O.T. says that they're hoping to get that information updated already. Fortunately, though, for us here at the city, we have an excellent resource, and the Police Department helped, uh, step in and provide us with some more recent information. This is based on traffic accidents over just the last 12 months, and you can see they're clustered again around Shannon Parkway that had four in the last 12 months, nine in and around the Nestler intersection, and five over there at Long Common and Weld. So, based on all that, we hope that you'll, uh, we hope that you see the need. We know anecdotally why, um, everyone talks about that we've got to widen Route 20, so hopefully this gives a little meat on the bones and you'll, uh, approve our request.
Questions for, uh, Mr. Malat or Mr. Poubens? Mr. Shaw?
Just, just a quick question. Uh, give me a ballpark on, on a, on the timeline of a project like this, and I guess, and the reason I'm saying that is, I'm, I'm looking farther west where we know that there's a larger development that I think we approved last year, uh, out there on, on, right there on the bend on 20. So, I guess the question I would have is, what's the timeline of this, and does it make sense to do some of the initial engineering work now, knowing that we're not gonna actually execute upon it, but would it make sense to do the study portion, all of it upfront? I don't know, so I'm just curious.
Well, the program timeline is approximately five years. By the time, so the feasibility study would be completed, July, I believe, is our schedule. Uh, we would hope to, if things go well and council wishes to proceed, we'd hope to present a Phase One agreement to you about that same time. Uh, part of the reason we're wanting to get started on the Phase One is the King Kendall Council of Mayors will have a call for projects, uh, probably in January of '24, and you get rated and ranked.
Sure.
And if you have your Phase One started and the city has made a commitment to do the Phase One, that will help us in the, in the ratings and the rankings and make it more likely that we get federal funding to help us do this.
And, and as it relates to, to Pingree Creek, you know, that's, the total number of dwelling units for that is, is, is upwards of 3,000 dwelling units, but at the same time, though, you've gotta remember they're not gonna all come out of the ground at once.
Yep.
At best, the first phase of, of Pingree Creek is 200-some apartments and maybe 100 and 120 single-family homes. And then Chodeen is telling us that at best they would envision building 20 to 25 homes a year. So, even if they started this year, which regrettably by all outward measures, they're taking, they're, they're taking a, a cautionary view based on the continued rising interest rates, how that's affecting, uh, their performance both on the apartment side and people's desire to build single-family homes, um, I, I just don't see that they're gonna be that many houses immediately spring up in Pingree Creek that's gonna funnel through that intersection.
So, and that, and that answers my question, just, I mean, five years to do this piece, you know, I, I mean, we're having significant enough challenges, I guess. My question was trying to allude to, do we need to do something more quickly for the second piece as well? But I'm, I'm getting the sense that we've got a couple of years where we could put off that engineering work a couple of years, at least minimally, and still have plenty of runway, you're saying, by the time that really gets ramped up?
We believe so.
Gotcha, thank you.
Sure.
I was gonna say, actually, the engineering work is very sequential, though. It's hard to run parallel paths on feasibility studies and Phase One, so we have to get through the feasibility study, probably have some sort of jurisdiction agreement with I.D.O.T. that then allows us to start Phase One, which gets us to preliminary design review, which is required to start Phase Two. So, even if we wished to really dive in headfirst on the engineering today, it would, it would be difficult.
Difficult, okay.
It's a pretty well-defined process.
Process, okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
Anything else for, Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation, fellas. Um, a couple of questions for you. Uh, since we're talking about going out west and, Mr. Poubens, we recently had this conversation about Highland Avenue, um, and Highland Avenue as it attached to, uh, Pingree Grove, uh, and the pebbles and the, the pebbled road that we've been maintaining now, um, which won their agreement to do for the next three to five years, something, something along those means. I'm in favor of doing this, but my question and my thinking is, is since we're already going out west and we're going to be contracting equipment or using our, our own equipment for about the same stretch of land as far as distance is concerned, which is about a mile and a half that needs to be completed, um, is there a possibility of you utilizing some of these resources that, you know, at some point in time to cross over to Highland and do some of that work there prior to Chodeen actually doing that, that development? Um, so, as, one of the great things Mr. Poubens is, is, does is, is educate on these processes, and, you know, he's saying, well, you know, this is gonna take a while to get this done. We're estimating construction 2027, 2028, if, if all went well. The annexation agreement that we signed with Chodeen in June of 2022 says that Chodeen has to improve Highland Wood, the Highland Avenue, their segment, the sooner of, as they approach it with development, or within three years. So, they'll be on the hook before we're ready to build this segment of road. Okay, so it won't, won't matter in that way? Correct. Okay, that's great, then. That was my other question, thank you.
Anything else? I have a, a comment, and I, you might wanna think about it, I've met with some neighbors out there probably five or six years ago, and they proposed an acceler, instead of go, looking, going west, they asked about an acceleration lane from Long Carmen, Long Common to tie into Route 20, because they have a really hard time getting out, uh, into that high-speed traffic. Is that something that we can look at? I even talked about, I, I even talked to I.D.O.T., believe it or not, and I didn't get much back, which should not stun you, but, uh, I asked about if, even if the city of Elgin helped pay for part of that, uh, just the acceleration lane, the land is there and a, and a guardrail, all those types of things. Is that something to think about as part of this?
It, it, it very much is. There's, there's two current I.D.O.T. projects that are going on along the Elgin segments of, of U.S. 20. One is centered around Shales Parkway, and how does that tie into 390, and how does that intersection get reconfigured? And that one is not yet completed with their, um, with their Phase One. However, they, the second project is a little longer in the tooth and has completed their Phase One engineering, and its purpose wasn't, uh, and we were talking about earlier that I.D.O.T. doesn't have any funding or plans for capacity improvement? That's an intentional choice of language. I.D.O.T. has plans to make some improvements out in this area, all the way towards Shales, but the purpose of those improvements are to extend the life of maintenance of the main line and bridges, enhance safety, and address mobility. And one of the areas that they looked at was the Long Common and Weld intersection. And as Mike and I continue to talk about what that solution, um, what, uh, was designed to be, it's exactly as you suggested for the Long Common piece. It's turning it into a, an essentially a merge ramp. I think I've got, uh, yes, right here. Oops, sorry, right there. So, you could see northbound up onto Long Common, extend that out towards the east, and then merge into traffic on Route 20. The problem, however, from our, in our humble opinion, is what's proposed for the north side on Weld. What that solution is, is that, let me go back here, is that it would essentially turn what is a full access at Weld south to Route 20 into a right-in and right-out, but if you wanted to go east, what you would have to do is go west for a couple hundred yards, enter the, a turn lane, wait for traffic to clear, do a jug-handle U-turn, and then head eastbound. And, right.
I laughed already.
So, um, that was another reason why we thought maybe a more broader look at Route 20 from this intersection west, and we could take a, a different perspective on how this intersection would be treated.
Thanks for the thoughts.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Rocheberger?
Oh, yeah, just thoughts, um, you know, older communities like our old part of Elgin are developed as grids, right? So, that you can always take a, you know, a, a, one or another road. Um, if Dundee Avenue is too busy, you can turn down on River Bluff, or you can turn down on Cogden, you can turn down on Slate. Um, so when, I know you're just doing this little piece, but I'm sure that you look at the bigger picture and say, how, how do we make through grids for this whole neighborhood? So, if 20's, um, busy, do they get to go to Route 90, or are they 72, or to, um, Big Timber Road, things like that? So, you look at the bigger picture, and I know we've talked about this year doing a bigger transportation plan for, planning for our whole community. So, those are sort of my questions. You know, I always feel sad, it's just like, just make it four lanes. Does that solve the big problem for the future? I'm not sure, that's all.
No, there's, there's plenty of studies out there show that, that when you add lanes, you're simply filling up those with the same amount of capacity, and you have to, you have to create interconnect connectivity, you have to create grids, and you do those grids at various levels. And one of the things that we highlighted in our memo is some of the other long-range planning, uh, perspectives, thoughts that we have out there, and that's what we kind of highlighted on this screen here. So, the colored areas are the, is the land that is currently zoned and in Elgin. The green swath through the middle is the segment of Route 20 that we're talking about. But as we are looking at development occurring in this area, we're being mindful of the notion that Nestler would extend north up to Highland, and that there's already infrastructure put in place with the northern end of Sandy Creek Estates here on Chase Lane being the beginning of an east-west connection that would go to Coombs, and hopefully be able to get back over to Randall to create that supergrid, and then we would fill it back in connectivitively as we, as we plan on the smaller subdivisions.
Sure. Okay, Ms. Powell?
Yes, thank you. Um, just a quick question, seeing that this is, uh, maintained by, by I.D.O.T., and I know that you all have had some conversations with them, I guess this question is more for the manager. Um, have we had any con, um, any conversations with our lobbyists or any of our, um, state-elected officials about getting some more help with this?
Not on this specifically. Um, we know that we just, Representative Mohler was instrumental with the current round of funding that's coming for U.S. 20 now, and so as you heard from Mr. Poubens and Mr. Malat, before we go, um, knocking on the door asking for assistance, we need a project that we're able to present, and this is the first phase in being able to do that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. We need, we need a motion and a?
Move for approval?
Second. Move in second for approval? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved, eight zero.
Item B also involves the work of Mr. Poubens. This is the Dundee Avenue-Center Street-Villa Street reconstruction project Phase One preliminary engineering design services with H.L.R. This roadway segment comprising Dundee Avenue-Center Street and Villa Street is being proposed for improvements extending from Summit Street to South Gifford Street. It will allow for the vulnerable road users to have a safe path from the residential areas east of the project to the downtown commercial area, and will also investigate improvements to hazardous intersections with the use of lane realignment and dedicated left-turn lanes onto signalized and non-signalized intersections. Um, Mr. Poubens can provide an additional overview. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Show you how tech-savvy I am, I've gotta use two laptops. Somebody oughta figure out how to combine all this stuff from town. No. Thank you, Manager Kozel. This is a request to approve a Phase One study, uh, oftentimes called preliminary engineering, for the Dundee-Center-Villa corridors, we're calling it. Uh, this project would pick up from the southern limits of the soon-to-be reconstructed Dundee Summit intersection, and would extend down to South Gifford Street approximately, and tie into a previously done section that took Villa Street out to U.S. 20, converted it to three lanes. So, if we, if we move forward on this and get it done, we'll basically have the entire Dundee-Center-Villa corridor reconstructed, uh, within a decade or so, which is pretty good work. So, I'm gonna pat myself on the back, too, but, uh, so here's the location map, but most of you know where this is at, but you can see up on the, on the north end, there's a Dundee Summit intersection, uh, that, actually, we just opened bids on that, so that should be coming to you soon to approve that bid for construction this year. And we'll extend this southerly towards downtown. Uh, there's Kimball Street intersection through the heart of downtown on Center, and then back out to Villa, down to South Gifford, there's a traffic signal there, so that'll be the, the southern end of this project, at least initially. So, again, a Phase One study looks into, again, preliminary design, it looks into environmental issues, it looks into pedestrian issues, cycling issues, all kinds of things. The main driver for this program is roadway safety. Uh, there, it's a high-accident corridor, and we've actually, the city has applied for and received a commitment through the Department of Transportation for the Highway Safety Improvement Program funding, which will qualify us for up to about 2.3 million in construction costs. And that will depend ultimately on the safety improvements that we choose to, to build, so it could vary from that, but, um, we use the phrase, the, the U.S. 20 project is going to be under the guise of complete streets. This isn't technically under complete streets, but it will be complete streets like, we're looking at pedestrian movement and safety. Uh, there's a desire to make an easier connection between everything east of this corridor to the downtown area, especially for, uh, people walking and cycling. Uh, we'll wanna look at mass transit pace predominantly to see how all that fits in. And again, a reduction in traffic accidents will be a, a key concern as we're moving forward on this. So, uh, this project, uh, right now we're targeting 2026, 27 for construction. Uh, that could change, we do have the two bridge projects that are, have begun, um, I don't know if we want pitchforks and torches here, if we tear everything up at once in one year, probably not. So, we'll be looking at that, and again, there, there's a lot of variables that could cause delays in one or more of those projects, so, but just to give you some idea of the timeline.
Any questions for Mike? Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was just wondering, can you clarify, like, you said it's not gonna be complete street, but close to it, what's the differentiation?
We're not following the complete streets policy as I.D.O.T. accepts it to the letter, but we are looking at many of the elements within complete streets.
Okay, is there any particular item that's being exempted?
Not, not too much. We don't have a fully developed complete streets policy here, so we can't claim that when we apply for funds, so, but we knew that, again, this is targeted for safety improvements, and much of the complete streets policies are targeted at safety improvements for non-automobile users.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
We need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Move in second for approval? Clerk, please call the roll.
And that will depend ultimately on the safety improvements that we choose to, to build. So it could vary from that. But we use the phrase, the US 20 project is going to be under the guise of complete streets. This isn't technically under complete streets, but it will be complete streets like, we're looking at pedestrian movement and safety. There's a desire to make an easier connection between everything east of this corridor to the downtown area, especially for people walking and cycling. We'll want to look at mass transit pace predominantly to see how all that fits in. And again, a reduction in traffic accidents will be a key concern as we're moving forward on this. So this project, right now, we're targeting 2026, '27 for construction. That could change. We do have the two bridge projects that are, have begun. I don't know if we want pitchforks and torches here, if we tear everything up at once in one year, probably not. So we'll be looking at that. And again, there, there's a lot of variables that could cause delays in one or more of those projects, so. But just to give you some idea of the timeline.
Any questions for Mike? Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, can you clarify, like you said it's not going to be complete street, but close to it, what's the differentiation?
We're not following the complete streets policy as IDOT accepts it to the letter. But we are looking at many of the elements within complete streets.
Okay. Is there any particular item that's being exempted?
Not.
Okay.
Not too much. We don't have a fully developed complete streets policy.
Okay.
Here, so we can't claim that when we apply for funds, so. But we knew that, again, this is targeted for safety improvements. And much of the complete streets policies are targeted at safety improvements for non-automobile users.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second for approval, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero.
Item C is a contract with Public Consulting Group LLC for consulting services related to the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services Required Medicare Survey. The fire department has been working with the Public Consulting Group for the past few years to submit the required annual cost analysis for the city's ground emergency medical transport reimbursement. The GEMT reimbursement, as it's typically referred to, is solely for Medicaid expenditures. The fire department in 2021 was notified by the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services that the city had been selected to participate in a new study. This study will assess the costs associated with Medicare to determine the need for potential increases in Medicare reimbursement. Although the fire department is technically not mandated to participate in this survey, declining to participate will lead to a 10% reduction in future GEMT reimbursements. With the understanding that this study may actually realize additional revenue for the city, it's the recommendation of staff that this $35,000 investment with the Public Consulting Group be approved.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero.
Item D is the juvenile violence intervention and prevention, often referred to as YEP program, Youth Empowerment Program. Police Department in October 2020 initiated a comprehensive review and analysis of its Operation Homefront program. That program first began in 2009 and conducted over 400 home visits with parents about possible gang-related activity by a child. Working with department personnel, community members, and Councilmember Corey Dixon and the consulting firm CK1, who was hired by the city in March of '21 to help develop and facilitate a new program that would provide a more robust response to juvenile violence and prevention, the Youth Empowerment Program was developed. YEP provides a robust response to juvenile outreach, prevention, and intervention, and began in October '21 with C-Kone providing the facilitation of the program, working with department personnel, community members, and community partners. The police department's goal when starting this program was to transition the program to the community, ultimately being facilitated solely by community liaisons. In furtherance of this goal, CK1 in June 2022 transitioned away from the program. And YEP is currently led by community liaisons Jeff Ligon and Aaron Cobb, who are here in attendance this evening, I understand. The police department's special oper, Special Investigations Group, school resource officers, and community outreach specialist Maria Barrera also participate in the program. Police Department is seeking to enter into a purchase-of-service agreement with Mr. Ligon and Aaron Cobb to facilitate the program. The department anticipates expanding the participation of community liaisons into the program beginning in 2024. Chief Lally is at the podium, and we have a number of guests in attendance this evening, so. How are you?
Yes, good. So, good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, and City Manager Kozel. So as City Manager Kozel just gave that overview, tonight I'm going to be providing an update on the Youth Empowerment Program. And again, this is our program that focuses on juvenile violence intervention and prevention, providing youth with opportunities, training, education, and intervention when appropriate. So the program was officially started in October of 2021. And as City Manager Kozel stated, our ultimate goal was to transition the program back into the community. And so this item here for you this evening, we've reached that goal. And so now we're transitioning and hoping to transition the program to the community members, who have been involved with us since day one in volunteering their time and their expertise to make the program successful. So just to give a little background on, and the history of the program, in October of 2020, I was here before the city council, and we were having conversations about school resource officers, additionally about, at the time, our department's gang prevention program called Operation Homefront. From October 2020 to March of 2021, that's when we began our comprehensive review of that program. Not only that, but also the department's response to how we engage with juveniles, you know, where can we improve and how can we revamp our program? So the department worked with Councilmember Dixon, Jeff and Aaron, and a consulting firm that was hired in March of 2021. And in July of 2021, I again came in front of the council providing an update to the program. And at that part, we were bringing our community members on board, which also includes School District U46. So in October of 2021, the program officially started. And again, in June of last year, we, in furtherance of our goal to transition the program back to the community, we then transitioned away from the consulting firm. And since then, Jeff and Aaron, along with the Special Investigations Group detectives, Will Usitis and Mike Fuller, along with the school resource officers at the, at the schools, our community partners, which include School District U46, the Boys and Girls Club of Elgin, and Alignment Collaborative. Nancy Coleman is here in the audience, along with School Resource Officer Beth Sterker. She's sitting back there. And I'll introduce the people behind me here in a second. But we also included now Community Outreach Specialist Maria Barrero into the program. So since the program's inception, 53 family intervention visits have successfully been conducted. Over 100 juveniles have been connected to the program, inclusive of our YEP youth groups that take place at both Elgin High School and Larkin High School. Those started in September of last year, so they're relatively new. These youth groups meet weekly. And additionally, we have 14 community partners on board, some of which I just mentioned. So we will continue to work collectively with all our stakeholders to continue the program, to meet, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community and also seeking additional community liaisons for maybe next year. So tonight, I'm joined by Jeff and Aaron, so, which you guys have met several times, Elgin High School Principal Jamie Croson, Elgin High School Dean Nick Balone, Elgin High School student Fabian Ramirez, and Elgin High School student Jeremiah Hill. And they're here this evening to share their experiences about YEP, how the program actually works in real life, some of their, you know, insight into what they do and how it's different before YEP was introduced into the schools. So instead of hearing it from me, I figured you'd probably want to hear it from, from them. So they are here this evening.
Hi, how are you? I'm Jamie Croson, I'm the principal of Elgin High School. I've been in the community for six years. I previously was the principal at Larkin. So if you saw me in blue, it wasn't your imagination. So coming off of COVID, schools, schools across the nation were in a very unique situation, reintroducing kids back into the educational environment and educational setting, getting to know kids all over again, transitioning them from the screen, their fears of COVID, back into the classroom. What we found at Elgin High School was we didn't know our kids. And we spent literally all of last year relearning them, re-engaging them. What we found was that in learning them and re-engaging them, we found that our sophomore boys, our rising freshmen, our sophomore boys, were a group of kids that needed a lot of support. Not from like support, support from academic, SCL, how do you conflict resolution, how do you talk about things with others, how do you connect with your, with your fellow classmates, things in that nature. If you were to look at research, educational research, it would suggest that the year that we lose a lot of our kids is sophomore year because they're not the freshmen. The freshmen get all the attention because they're the babies. The juniors are taking the SAT and prepping for college. And your seniors are one step away, you're prepping them to go way to college. So we looked at some of our data and we said to ourselves, look, we need to create some programs that supports our 10th grade kids. And at the very beginning of the year, we had started working with YEP previously, before, during COVID, the partnership there was, didn't go so well. Then we found, then we came with Mr. Cobb, Mr. Ligon, with Nancy, with our entire team and said, what can we do as a school to make this unique to Elgin High School, unique to Larkin High School, for our kids? And so we created a program that right now has roughly about 24 boys in it. It focuses on, it focuses on manhood, it focuses on, just like some positive things about, I wrote it down, now I can't find it. But just some things that, that we really, here it is. Focus on manhood, being better citizens, reaching your potential, finding your gen, finding the genius in you. And we connected with some of our local partners. I don't know if you know Reggie Key. Reggie Key used to be in the city of Elgin, now he's in South Carolina bragging about the weather. And so he did some sessions with our kids, again, to get them to, to find the genius in them. We also use this as an opportunity to really bridge the gaps between our kids and the, and police officers. Our kids sometimes take a very negative connotation towards it. So having Officer Sterker there, having Officer Vega there as representatives of, no, this is what good policing is. This is what we model real policing off of. And this is the relationship that we want you to build when you're navigating the streets and the community. So it's not a one-size-fits-all model. So from there, we then had a semester of events. Mr. Balone will talk to you about the specific data for them. We meet with them every two weeks. And based on their data, we have seen some, some really impressive progress. Balone?
Hi, again, my name's Nick Balone, the sophomore dean at Elgin. And kind of like what Mr. Croson talked about, we started with our sophomore boys because we know that there is that drop-off, right? And we know that freshman year, they have all that extra support. And as they go into that sophomore year, they lose a lot of it. And so we really wanted to start with the sophomore boys as our jumping-off point. Some of the key things that we looked at when we selected the boys initially, we looked at things like attendance, right? Maybe that was their struggle, maybe for some of them it was academic, maybe for some of them it was behavior, or maybe for them it was maybe not the type of support at home that, that can really help them jump to that next level. And so those are some of the key things that we looked at. But the other, and the big thing that we looked at is, what kind of leadership potential do they have, right? Are these the type of students that maybe need a little extra investment in them to see that investment happening for them, that they're going to now take that next level? And so we arrived at a group of kids. We told them, you know, if you, we have a few more spots, if you want to bring some people in, bring some people in. And now we've gotten to those 24 kids. So like Mr. Croson said, we meet bimonthly, we meet every Tuesday. We picked that bimonthly time because we didn't want to pull them from classes too often, right? We didn't want to have any sort of learning loss. We stagger the meetings, so it's not the same period every single day, or every single week. Like you said, we've brought a lot of outside vendors in, but not just outside vendors. We also have been reaching out with our, our local police. So we had Officer Cam Jackson, who was a graduate of Elgin High School, come in one day. And so we spoke with the kids. But he also talked with one of his teachers, who we built a good relationship around. And so we had them kind of talk about how that relationship grew. Because again, we know these are sometimes our students who don't know how to speak with the adults in the building, don't know how to forge that connection. We know how important that connection is. So those are some of the things that we tried to focus on. Now, in this semester, we've tried to implement more of circles, right? Circles are an opportunity for the kids to kind of speak with one another. And so we've been building that curriculum together, myself and one of our social workers, so that they have more of an opportunity to talk more, to learn from each other, and to grow that sense of community. Once those kind of get going, they get comfortable with a lot of the rules and the protocols and they get good at sharing with one another, we want to make sure that we're bringing more and more community members, people that they can recognize themselves in and see who they can grow up to be. So, and then along with that, we also have, you know, some rewards. We want to be able to show them that all their hard work's going to pay off. So at the end of last semester, we rewarded them with a trip to the Windy City Bulls game. For a lot of the kids, it was the first time they got to go to something like that. And that was a really, really exciting thing. I know we're starting plans up for our semester trip now. We've talked, some of the kids have talked about wanting to go to Kane County game. We've talked about maybe Whirly Ball. But along with that, we're also planning on taking them to Northern in a few months. So there's different things that we're trying to show that we are here for you and we're going to invest in you to try and get them to that next level. And it's starting to pay off, we're starting to really see it. You know, it's not huge results, but for starters, the number of courses our students have failed dropped this semester back down to the number that they failed their freshman year. So all of our sophomores, they're, they're now kind of excelling at the same pace that they were that very first semester when they're brand-new and they want to put that best foot forward and everyone's, you know, rah-rah on their back and working for them. So that was great to see. The data is also showing that our students collectively are maintaining the essential, the same GPA that they had from the end of last year, right? So we're not seeing that big learning loss across the whole group. As well, nearly half of our students saw a rise in their GPA. Six of them only saw a .10 drop, right? So again, we're seeing it in the, in the academics behaviorally. And this is where I was excited as a dean. Our students are having far less referrals in the classroom, far less behavior referrals. So they're not getting into incidents with one another, they're not getting into any incidents with teachers, and they're seem to just be more engaged in the classroom. And they're not nearly on pace for the same number of referrals. Beyond the data, I can tell you too, just in some of those more anecdotal things, I can tell you stories about a lot of our kids in this group and how far they've come. I know one student, and I'm not going to name any names, obviously, but one student who had an issue with drugs at the end of the school year. He came into our school this semester having those same issues. They even got worse. I can tell you, he's now been drug-free for two months. Couldn't be prouder of himself, his mom is so proud of him. Another student whose mother was concerned about his gang affiliation, got into some stuff early on in the school year. His, he, for the first time, didn't, sorry. He nearly got stratus this semester, has had no issues for the rest of the semester. I can tell you about another kid who had failed all but three, three or four classes last year. He passed every single class last semester. So just a number of stories about these kids and how, the great things that they've done. Now, I'm not going to tell you that all of this is due to YEP and that YEP is perfect just yet. It's not solely responsible. But what I am telling you is that this group is starting to realize the investment that's being put into them, and they're starting to respond. We've got a couple students here today that's going to kind of attest to that. And I can only tell you that I believe that if we continue to invest in them from the city, that we're going to continue to see these results.
Hi there, my name is Fabian Ramirez, and I'm an Elgin High School student. Something that I can confirm from this YEP program is the leadership that is shown. I do wrestling as a sport. And there's a huge gap between leadership from freshman year, from all the COVID stuff, I haven't seen my friends in months, that type of stuff, to now sophomore year reconnecting with my fellow classmates and having to step up as a leader in my team. In the beginning of the semester, I was kind of distant from them in the beginning of the season. And going to these youth empowerment programs, I've been taught that communication is very much, very, very important in everything. Having to communicate with everybody, having to understand them, being in the same shoes as them. Right now, if my fellow teammates were here, they would say the same about how much of a leader I have grown into. My own coach as well, he'd probably be in here in tears talking about me just because of the improvement that I've had. And I, I love it, honestly, I really love it. Mr. Balone, an amazing person. I've never thought I would have a relationship with my dean like I do with Mr. Balone. Never, in my entire four years with my teachers as well. It really brought me a new point of view on, with my teachers. They had a, they had brought in a teacher, and he told us his story with his students and how these little things can really impact your education and relationships with your own teachers. And so every time I see my teachers, I tell them, "Good morning." I tell them, "How are you doing?" And it's such a different environment with your teacher. You don't walk in the class feeling, "Oh, I don't want to be here." I walk in the class going, "I'm excited to learn" because I have so much respect for my own teacher and the own stuff they, they go through and stuff. It's, it's such a good environment. Suzu always brings in food for us. Always brings in food for us, always is taking care of us, asking us how we're doing, making sure we have everything we need. And whenever we get sidetracked, Mr. Balone is also there to help support us and to keep us on track, which is what we need. A lot of these sophomore kids, last year, they didn't know anybody. They had to learn fresh. But this YEP program really gets us on track. And I really do appreciate it. And that's why I am here. I'm here for the program, I'm here for myself. And I'm also here for the other members, to give them what they need and what they deserve. Thank you.
My name is Jeremiah Hill. And yeah, I just wanted to back up today, that's why I came here,
That's why I came here, that this is a great program. And I can see the difference in when my education outside of school, even inside the classroom, it's like everything's improving. But I'm not going to say that it's fast, but it's improving slowly. Yeah. And a lot of things like Balone, Mr. Cobb, I feel like they always like, well, like everybody in the program, it's almost like they give you an extra push. Like parents, they give you an extra push. And I feel like if you're missing that, they're just there to like help you. And then they're showing how much like education has potential. Like you can go to colleges with it, you can go to college to get a job with it. I feel like there's a lot of ways and like a lot of things that we're learning to keep on pushing us. Like what he said, to keep on going to the classroom, not just being there to, "Oh yeah, I'm going to just be here." But now you're like excited to learn and stuff like that.
It's good to see everybody. I know I've talked to some of you about the progress of the program. I'm happy about it. Obviously, these two kids, I can go on and say they both play for me. So to see them grow and kind of see them join into this has been really good. But the help of all the SROs from Beth, I'm sorry, Officer Sterker, Officer Vega, even the middle schools as far as Officer Kevin Jaren, Lysandra Ramirez, Sonalski, there's a few more. I know I'm missing some and I apologize to them. But Nancy, thank you so much for everything that you do as far as making sure that we have food, as far as coordinating things, as far as who's going to be where. You've been a huge help for us. Chief, thank you again for, you know, opening everything up for us. Principal Crowson and Ms. Bush, opening those doors to the high schools have been huge. Obviously, to be embraced by them has been amazing. Just to kind of get the reception that we got, I've got to know Mr. Balone, Mr. Graff, Ms. Howard, and these people that, I'm just a football coach there, to be honest. So I didn't know these people in that aspect. But to just kind of see how much they love and care for these kids has definitely been nice for me being from this community, actually growing up and going to that school. So I think at the beginning of the year, we did like an open house at Elgin and just to kind of see everybody come together. And I told the kids, you know, I know society has kind of told you that these people are against you, but they don't dedicate their time to show how much they care, if that is true. And I think through these relationships, through these stories that have kind of come out, I think they see that they have a lot of people supporting them, right? There's never enough, there's never enough support for these young people. I knew I needed it, I know Jeff needed it, I know there's other people in our community that need it. So again, thank you for everything that you guys have done. Any questions that you've ever had, I embrace them, I love them because it's, obviously it's going to make us better in the long run. So thank you.
So I just wanted to also say, you know, thank you to everyone in the program, all our community partners, all the officers, everyone has done, if you think about where we were about three years ago, this literally started from a conversation that Jeff and I had at a protest. And it was somebody who, you know, didn't see a barrier speaking to the police chief and I never saw a barrier speaking to him. And as we walked around the police station with protesters all around us, this was a conversation about he wanted to do something different for his children and for the community. And so I applaud Jeff and Aaron. They are amazing people who have volunteered so much of their time and really made this program successful, you know, breaking down barriers between police officers. The officers who are involved, you know, Detective Beth Sterker is here, she's a school resource officer at Elgin High, does an amazing job just like all our SROs. So I'm proud to stand here today, you know, three years later after the conversation about taking SROs out of school and changing and doing something different. And I think hopefully the program, you know, we will always be improving, there's always more to do, but I think this is a great representation of when people put their minds together and break down barriers and work together past the divisiveness, great things can happen. So I'm really proud of everyone involved in this program. So special thank you, Councilwoman Dixon, for your support. And I know you were there since day one too with our many, many meetings over Zoom. And so this is just, it's a great thing to see students come up here and talk and principals who are involved and Nancy who's always there. And so I think this is just something that Elgin should be really proud of tonight. So thank you guys for your support as well.
Okay. Questions for the chief or the team? Ms. Powell?
Thank you. Thanks to everyone that's involved. Thanks to the young men that were here, that are here and spoke so eloquently today. I know that's probably not easy, but so kudos, I appreciate it as a mom of a teenage boy. I really am excited to hear how well this program is going. I am also excited to hear about all the different partnerships and who's involved. Nancy from Alignment Collaborative, all the SROs, the staff at the high schools, and it sounds like even staff from the middle schools. So this is really good and I think it's a model for us moving forward. I really like the carrot approach in terms of some of the trips that you all have planned for the students. Who actually sponsors the trips? Who pays for that?
So with this, there's going to be some money allocated towards the department paying for those trips. So in the past, they've been paying for it, we've given some assistance from the department, but it's time for allocated money and resources for the program so that people don't have to be taking money out of their pocket or Nancy, you know, or whoever. So that's part of what's included in the budget as well. So, you know, putting the money there, the resources there so that, you know, the program can continue and there can be some great trips involved in it as well.
Has this been presented at the U46 level in terms of giving them an update on where things stand with the program and potentially asking them for some financial assistance?
I am not sure of that. Nancy?
There's so many people who watch us on, there's a mic right here, perfect, because there's so many folks that watch at home that definitely want to hear everything you have to say.
We have a wonderful representation from Elgin High School and their leadership tonight, but I also want to draw attention to the program that is at Larkin. We have a girls' group and a boys' group at Larkin and we are seeing significant progress there. So all together, we're very pleased with that. I do think following this work with you tonight that we should plan on an update to the school board before the end of the school year. We again started out with consultants. Consultants gave us a good bit of value in the beginning, but as Chief Lally said, it was time for the community to embrace the program and get behind it. So we decided to do that and I'm just thrilled. I am so proud of both of these young men here. I see them at least twice a month and it's just great to see how they've grown and what a wonderful experience this is for them tonight to be able to talk to you in this kind of setting. So this is all about leadership and building our youth and building our future workforce for the region.
Great, thank you. Yeah, definitely would recommend taking, taking the show we saw tonight and the presentation on the road so that U46 sees the value in it. Obviously, you're focusing on the schools that are within the city of Elgin.
Correct.
But Elgin, we have so many Elgin students that go to schools outside of Elgin within U46. And I, I'm speaking of my own child who's at South Elgin High School and Beacon Academy. So I really want to see the U46 school district really embrace this program, help fund it, help expand it so that students across the district that may have a need, because I'm sure that there are other students at Bartlett, Streamwood, South Elgin that could benefit from the program. So as usual, Elgin's leading the way and definitely appreciate the leadership from all of you and in particular, leadership from you, Chief Lally. Thank you so much.
Anything else? Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say thank you to everybody in the room and who's not here tonight for this program. It definitely hits home for me specifically, I mean, it went off the rails for me sophomore year. So you guys seem to be hitting it right at the right spot. And just to reiterate to the students, it seems like y'all are here, you know, on an upward trend, taking things slowly. But speaking from experience, you know, you can be doing everything right and then make one, you know, wrong decision and it kind of goes haywire. So, you know, take the leadership that you showed here tonight, bring it back to your group, try and reiterate that, you know, you guys are doing something to catch traction right now, but really just make sure you don't have that one slip-up that sets you back because academically it'll set you back professionally and who knows? So, but I'm just really proud of everything you guys put together for the community, 100% support this. So thank you for presenting tonight.
Anything else? Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. Thank you to everyone that presented tonight. Thank you, Principal Crowson, for coming out and speaking so eloquently about the program and the progression over the years and even speaking specifically about your school and the transition coming out of COVID. I think that was really important. Thank you to you too as well, Mr. Balone, great job. Jeff and Aaron, whatever, guys, you know, keep up the good work. To the, to the, to the chief of police, thank you for everything that you've done. Stuff like this doesn't happen without a chief like you.
Thank you.
And so very forward-thinking, progressive, and so I appreciate and value your leadership. So thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And to the young men, well, before I get to the young men, Nancy, Nancy, thank you too, because you do, Nancy is not, I mean, she's the executive director of Alignment Collaborative Education, but she spends her own time going out to these meetings. And so that's just, it's just awesome. She's not delegating that, she's actually out there doing the work. To the young men, you know, I'm so happy that you guys are here and you did a wonderful job speaking. And I just want to tell you that, you know, you're in high school, things are weird, you're trying to figure stuff out, you know? I was there not too long ago, it was only a couple of years ago for me, you know? But you, you know, you're trying to figure things out, but I just want to let you know I've been where you've been before and it's going to be all right. And sometimes you're going to have some setbacks and sometimes things aren't going to go smoothly, but you just keep it moving. You know, you stay, you keep positive, you keep positive people around you, right? You do things with the right intentions, right? You move with respect and honor, right? And things will work out in your favor, all right? So you just keep it positive and keep it moving, okay? Even when people try to be negative, you just stay positive, all right? Two stories real quick. I was at a neighboring business just earlier this week and it was a mechanic shop. And while speaking to the owner, the owner told me to look out the window downstairs into the bay and he showed me three young men that were down there working on the car. He said, you know, "Those kids, they came from Elgin High School." And I was like, "Oh, okay, that's pretty cool. Yeah, they have a mechanics program up there, that's pretty awesome." He said, "Yeah," he said, "you know, it's different." I was like, "What do you mean?" He said, "Well, they tell me that it's different at school." "Well, how so?" He says, "Well, you know, there used to be fights, the kids tell me there used to be a lot of fights, there was some gang activity, there was a lot." He was like, "But now that stuff barely happens inside the building." Said, "Really?" He said, "Yeah, so what do you contribute that to? What did the kids say they contribute that to?" They said, "Well, the bad kids, the bad kids are, they're being ushered off into programming and there's some mentoring and all kind of, you know, whatever, there's some intervention happening, right? So classroom is different, the hallways are different." And he didn't say it was YEP, right? But it goes with the holistic idea of what you're doing there, Principal Crowson, at EHS. And I think just like as Balone was saying, we can't, we can't give YEP all the credit, but we do know it's a part of the solution. So I take my hat off to that. Second one real quick, visited with, had lunch with a principal of elementary school. They said, "Hey Cory, we want to have some youth programming at an elementary school because these kids, they need it, right?" Which is my challenge to the program. So they're currently, we're currently focusing on high school kids, right? We don't necessarily have the bandwidth to get to all the high schools even, certainly not all the junior highs or down to the elementary school. But I would like for us to begin thinking about how we can effectively get to some of those students too, even if it's some of those feeder schools for Elgin High and for Larkin to get into that so that we can get them even earlier in the pipeline. My colleague said that he, you know, it flew off the rails for him in 10th grade. For me, it was probably about fifth. So, you know, also my point is, is that, you know, kids at a different level, depending on what they're going through, they need that intervention as well. So, but yeah, I'm definitely going to support this, keep up the great work. Happy to be a part of it and I'm happy to see it, see it grow, so keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Thorne?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Anna, and all of you. Just want to say one thing real quick. Everyone knows me and I'm, like, I say I'm the voice for seniors in our community. I've always focused on older people. I've never had children, I've never been around the youth much, and now that I've been on council and more engaged and I see programs like this, it reiterates how proud I am to be part of this community. You all show the pride and you extend it to all residents of Elgin. And kudos to Detective Sterker. It shows someone that really steps up and it's interesting, I grew up across the street from her grandparents and her father, so I've known that family for a long time and to just think how things come full circle. So compliment to you, Beth. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Anything else? We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, a court please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. Congratulations, good job, guys.
Yep.
Items E and F, here we go. Items E and F are companion pieces of sort. They refer to the City Hall and the Hemmans roof and paver replacement programs. When you hear the term roof in both of these instances, it's not roof on top of the buildings, but the roof that's located beneath the pavers that covers the basement areas of both of those locations. Item E relates to an amendment agreement for the City Hall roof and paver replacement. It's $130,000 project. In conjunction with the work at the Hemmans that involved all of the paver replacement, the decision was made to advance the replacement of the pavers at City Hall so that there would be consistency with the surfaces in both of those areas. When we began removing the pavers at the entrance to City Hall to evaluate the conditions, damage to steel on the building and the roof flashing located below those pavers was discovered. Since the repairs, the roof flashing and steel require the removal of the pavers to gain access for the repairs, efficiency requires completing those roof repairs, those basement roof repairs, in conjunction with the paver replacement. So item E is a $128,000 initiative to make those corrections to the paver system at City Hall and the roof that's located beneath that.
Move approval.
Second. Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero.
Item F is an amendment agreement for the Hemmans Cultural Center roof and paver replacement. This is a $13,000 initiative because the work that was expected to be performed to rehabilitate the roof under the pavers at the Hemmans was found not to be necessary because that roof was in better condition. However, there was also observation of damage to the flashings and the steel located below. We are receiving a credit from the contractor for the work that was contemplated for the roof repairs, applying that to the, to the, to the, excuse me, the roof, to the flashing and because of that, the cost is only $13,000 to add the additional work.
Move for approval.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero.
Item G is an amendment agreement with Cordigan and Clark Associates and Cordigan Clark Consulting Services for construction management services at the Hemmans Cultural Center in conjunction with the Northside renovation in addition. The city's current agreement with Cordigan and Clark approved in August does not include construction management and construction oversight services. Similar to other capital construction contracts, staff is now recommending an amendment to the existing agreement to add construction management and construction oversight services for this project. The proposed amendment to the agreement's scope of services adds bid lighting, bid review and bid review and selection services along with daily onsite construction management, quality assurance and control, regular onsite meetings, and directly working with the contractors. The proposed amendment to the agreement's scope of services adds bid lighting, bid review, and bid review and selection services, along with daily onsite construction management, quality assurance and control, regular onsite meetings, and directly working with the contractors. Staff is recommending the approval of this amendment to the agreement, which is just over $1 million, and this cost is included in the $12.8 million project budget. This is not a new addition.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved eight-zero.
Item H, Laserfish Enterprise Content Management System Renewal. The city's been using Laserfish Content Management since 2012. It enables the city to archive and manage documents, videos, photos, and other electronic content. Since its initial implementation, Laserfish has proven its value by saving thousands of hours of staff time in document handling and forms processing. It has that extremely powerful forms processing system and workflow engine, and that interface and exchange of data alone through that automation provides great value to the organization and makes Laserfish an integral product in the day-to-day operations. In the past, Jeff Massey has received awards from the city's work and implementation with Laserfish for the innovations that it's created.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved eight-zero.
Item I is a proposed amendment with Paymentis for credit card processing merchant services. The city has been using Paymentis as its merchant service provider that processes credit card transactions since 2018. We contracted with Paymentis to host payment pages for remote and over-the-counter payments. This vital function allows residents to make payments for utilities, citations, permits, licenses, and code compliance fines. Staff is recommending continuing with Paymentis for one year to ensure business continuity while behind the scenes, it prepares a merchant services request for proposal to ensure competitive pricing and capabilities in the market.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved eight-zero.
Item J is the 2023 Athletic Facility Improvement Funding. This program provides financial assistance to Elgin-based sports organizations for making capital improvements to city-owned properties on which they conduct their athletic programs. These sports organizations supplement the city's funding with donations of in-kind services for their volunteers. This year, six sports organizations provided funding requests totaling almost $200,000 for capital improvements. The award this year is going to, oh, I forgot your, five organizations requested funding. So, including the Elgin National Little League, Elgin Youth Football and Cheer, Elgin's Men's Baseball, Elgin BMX Riders Association. Those are the awardees this year.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor Captain.
Ms. Paul.
Yes, obviously, this is a program that the need far exceeds the money that we allot every year. As City Manager Kozel mentioned, we award $50,000, and I think that's been the amount for a number of years, but the requests were in excess of about $200,000, or actually it looks like it's closer to about $180,000. I guess, you know, early, I'm just throwing this out here early in the year for us to potentially look at, how can we assist these organizations better in the future? And I know that we have a lot of competing interests and a lot of needs throughout the community, but I'm big on trying to assist with some of the sports needs, especially for our youth. These are our properties at the end of the day, and I think we should take a more active role as a city in maintaining those properties and not necessarily expecting these youth organizations that don't, that, you know, may or may not be as savvy and able to, you know, get quotes for services and leverage in-kind services to fix stuff that ultimately belongs to us. So, I'll just throw that out there as something that I would like to see us plan for differently in the 2024 budget.
Mr. Kozel?
Maria Campada has already, as it states in the memo, was planning to seek an increase in the 2024 budget cycle, but no, it did not contemplate having the city actually go out and do that work. We can talk about it at that time, but part of the reason for this cosponsorship program is these sports organizations essentially have exclusive use of these facilities, and that's what's used to help justify the in-kind services. We'll have to see what if any impact that has if the city is actually going out conducting that work when it's only for the benefit of a discreet organization. But that's something we can talk about, but again, there's recognition that this $50,000 is not enough under current circumstances, and Ms. Campada is ready to come back with proposals in the 2024 budget cycle.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Shaw?
Typically in the past, I think we've at least gotten a list of the projects that have been submitted, even though they didn't get selected or not, but at least we used to get some additional detail. I'm not sure if that's available or not, just kind of curious, because I noticed that typically a lot of these situations, I'll see where each organization gets a small amount. This one, I saw that there were a number of organizations that didn't get any, so I just was curious to see what the list of projects were.
If you look at the actual grant agreement, there's a little...
That's for the ones that were approved.
Oh, you're talking about the ones that were approved.
And some of these organizations, I'm assuming had multiple ideas as well, possibly, so.
Anything else? Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved eight-zero.
Item K is proposed service agreements with three independent fitness contractors. The Edward Shaw Center of Elgin uses independent contractors to provide various fitness-related services to its patrons. The city derives an annual net revenue of about $22,000 from group fitness and personal training in 2022. This memorandum is requesting the approval of service contracts with three vendors whose annual compensation typically exceeds $20,000 in a given year. The services relate to group fitness classes, personal training, and group personal training.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved eight-zero.
Item L is the proposed recodification of the Elgin Municipal Code. The code was last comprehensively updated and recodified in 1976. The city council approved an agreement with MuniCode in 2020 to provide online code hosting services for the Elgin Municipal Code, and that agreement also provided for recodification services involving a comprehensive review and updating of the code. The review and update of the code was conducted in conjunction with, under the direction of the legal department, has finalized the suggested edits and changes to the code to provide for an updated manual. Proposed revisions include style and formatting changes, editorial revisions to remove duplicate references, replacing various specific fees with references to the city's unified fee ordinance, updates that reflect changes in city departments and employee titles, changes to the existing law, and updates that reflect changes in city ordinance and revisions that remove gender-specific references. Following the adoption of the recodified municipal code, MuniCode will post this code online, and the currently posted PDF of the code will be replaced with a searchable, state-of-the-art online code service, and that will bring much joy to Mr. Cogly, Ms. Dewis, and many others in the organization.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Ms. Roshenberg?
Yeah, I think this was, of course, a wonderful project and a great thing to do. I think that people would like to know, there were a few things taken out. For example, we used to have no, or smoking was allowed on buses, and now that is no longer in our code. There was another one I thought was interesting was, police had the right to shoot a loose dog if it was seen in the park, and that's...
That was Maria Campada, not the police.
So, it was a great, you know, thing to look at all these municipal codes and update them. I want to just ask about, did this include overall zoning, our zoning and things like that?
No, so substantive change, this was not intended as a, to make comprehensive substantive amendments to the code.
Just to clean it up.
Yeah, you'll see us coming back with topics of, for future considerations, for some substantive issues that we left. And for instance, like the fees that are being removed, we didn't change any of them. Some of them, we have this unified fee ordinance, these were leftovers that hadn't been reviewed, and so there'll be a direction to staff to review these fees in conjunction with the 2024 budget. So, zoning will be a separate process. Amending the zoning ordinance is a very major substantial undertaking, so the changes to the zoning ordinance here are simply some cleanup, some editorial things, they're not substantive changes, but a zoning ordinance update is something that will be considered separately.
Okay, thank you, because, yeah, I think we've talked about, you know, some zoning updates, you know, in regards to sustainability for EV, et cetera, so that's separate, okay? And also, it would be for our ethics. You just sent us some information on our ethics code, so that also is not being changed in any substantive way.
It is not, so that was substantially rewritten just a year, well, almost two years ago now. And so, that will remain in the code, but that's a recently enacted and new chapter, but that will be, that is unchanged here.
Okay. I had a few questions about that, but for another time, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Stefan?
Yeah, maybe Bill and Kim don't want to hear this, but when I saw this, the first thing I thought of is we have to somehow have a process established to do this more frequently than every 36 years. So, I...
I think it's 46 years.
Or 46 years, yeah, my math, it's so long ago, my math is off by a decade. So, that's the only comment I want to make. I don't know how frequent, five years, 10 years, but somehow we have to have a process where we're kind of looking through this, and I noticed it's all on MuniCode now, it's all online, it can be searchable. There's got to be a way to kind of do this in a much more timely fashion.
So, I can address that. So, 46 years is too long, but it is a major, major undertaking of time. The amount of hours that we've spent doing this, so I would suggest, and it's not to say that the code hasn't been updated, right? It just, there's a lot of these edits and cleanups that haven't been done. The code has been amended substantively many, many times, including an entirely new zoning ordinance, and development ordinance, and subdivision ordinance, so many aspects of it are much newer than that. But I do hear you that whether it's every 10 years that we do it, you know, it's about a $40,000 undertaking, so we don't want to do it gratuitously, but some interval of, you know, every 10 years or so where we would go through and do cleanups and title updates and things like that. But it is just a very, very substantial, I mean, we're looking at approximately 1,500-page code that we literally went through line by line and had many phone conferences with the consultants, and so there's no two happier people to have this over with than the two people at the end of the diocese that were landing this spaceship finally. And just as far as timing, MuniCode now is compiling all of this, and it's going to take them probably till the end of March, they say, to do it. So, we would expect to come back to you with, it will just be an adoption ordinance with the cleaned-up code, so it'll probably be in about a month or so, that you'll see this come back with the final adoption.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Good?
Just wanted to point out a couple more changes. First and foremost, thanks to the councils before me for not implementing a red light program here in Elgin. That's being stripped from the books, which is great. Also, it looks like we can now officially use our cell phones to show proof of insurance if you ever do get pulled over, so just wanted to highlight that out of some of the changes here.
Anything else? Okay, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved eight-zero.
In observance of Black History Month, I have a couple of announcements. The African-American Coalition of Kane County will be celebrating Black History Month with a program this Friday at 5:30 at the Center of Elgin and the Heritage Ballroom. It's free of charge. I believe this is cosponsored by the Elgin Cultural Arts Commission and is open to the public. Second announcement I'd like to make is basically just a Black History Moment, I'll call it. As we celebrate Black History Month in Elgin, we would be remiss if we did not acknowledge the life, legacy, and contributions of former Elgin City Councilmember Robert Gilliam. Robert Gilliam was elected as Elgin's first black city council member at the tender age of 28 years old in 1973. He went on to serve on the Elgin City Council for 40 years until he lost his reelection bid in 2013. At the time of his death in 2014, Gilliam was the longest-serving local official in Illinois outside of the city of Chicago. On September 11, 2014, just three months before his death, the municipal complex here at 150 Dexter Court was renamed the Robert Gilliam Municipal Complex. Bob, as I affectionately knew him, loved Elgin, served our community with pride, and led Elgin through some of the most difficult times we've probably seen in this community. It was an honor and privilege to serve with him during the first two years of my tenure on the city council. He was a mentor to me, and I learned so much from him. Just wanted to highlight Bob Gilliam's service to our community, miss him dearly, and definitely appreciate all of his service and everything he brought to Elgin's community. Thank you.
Anything else? Non-sentiment from staff?
None, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn, and with the announcement that...
Actually, I think there's one.
I'm sorry.
Well, I was looking over here because I think maybe an announcement that the police department just earned an accreditation from ILEAD, and I'm afraid to even try to figure out what that stands for.
ILEAD?
No, law enforcement accreditation. They, in March, there will be a formal presentation before the city council, so we're not going to let that go unnoticed, thank you.
All right.
Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn, and I'll make an announcement right now that we have canceled the executive session for this evening because of the weather. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshenberg?
Yes.
Find our seats, please. Regular meeting for the Elgin City Council to order for February 22nd, 2023. Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Martinez? Powell?
Here.
Rauschenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Here.
Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval amendments to the previous meeting of February 8.
Move for approval. Second.
Move the second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. We have one communication this evening. It's a proclamation for Allstate Insurance. Mr. Dixon.
Good evening to those here in person and to those at home. Every February, which is Black History Month, we go to recognize a business in the community that has been a staple. And this year, we are recognizing a business that has been here for a long time. And I'm going to proceed to read a proclamation on behalf of Mayor Dave Captain. And it reads, whereas February has been designated as Black History Month, where all citizens are encouraged to reflect on the sacrifices and contributions made by generations of African-Americans, and resolve to recognize longstanding local African-American business owners who have made important contributions and are advocates in our community. And whereas one such family is owned by Bruce King, was established in August of 2001, known as Allstate Insurance, King Insurance Consultants, located at 840 Summit Street, licensed in the state of Illinois, Wisconsin, known for providing a unique and personalized insurance experience to each customer. And whereas Bruce King and his wife, Tanya, have lived in and contributed to the Elgin community for over 33 years, choosing to raise their family and build their insurance business in the Elgin area due to the diverse culture and rapid growth of the city. And whereas Bruce King and his family are active members at their parish, Second Baptist Church, regular participants with the fraternity, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, the coldest brothers that you're ever going to meet. I just added that. And continually volunteer for several events throughout the year, including the annual golf outing, teaching weekly sewing classes, and uniting in the fight against hunger with the local food bank. And whereas the city of Elgin appreciates the efforts of Bruce King Allstate Insurance, King Insurance Consultants, and his commitment to his business, volunteerism, and promoting the aspirations of African-American in this community. Now therefore, I, Corey Dixon, on behalf of David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin of Illinois, do hereby ask all citizens to join me in honoring Bruce King of Allstate Insurance, King Insurance Consultants, for his dedication to his business, the community, and to the city of Elgin. Congratulations.
I'm a person of few words. Bruce couldn't be here because he was sick, and he didn't want to pass it on to everybody else. So he asked me to show up, but we are business partners together. Thank you for calling us and giving us this honor. I guess when you're in the community for so long, you don't think anything of it. So it is nice to be appreciated by the community. And we look forward to many more years in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Can this bring us to a portion for a public comment? Ms. Dewis is excited. She's got an email to read.
We received an email from Denise Saban. It reads, "I apologize for not being at the city council meeting this evening. I am however viewing the meeting from the comfort of my home. I am writing to inquire about the timeline for decisions for the second, final two sets of recommendations for the task force on community policing. It is my understanding that the recommendations read the civil review board have now gone to legal. It is my hope that this set of recommendations don't get lost as they did the last time there was a recommendation by the Elgin Human Relations Commission regarding the creation of the civil, civilian review board. As I've stated, last time this was recommended, the recommendation went to legal and never saw the light of day. I again implore the city council to not let this happen again. The second set of recommendations relates to racial profiling by police. It is my understanding that council is trying to get folks from the CPE to come back. It would be helpful to inform the community what the status of this is. I am asking the council to be transparent on both sets of recommendations. I am asking also that the council or city manager who sets the agenda to not delay action on the task force recommendation and to not wait until after the election, as happens so often when there are controversial action items pending. Thanks so much for any and all information you can provide regarding my questions. I'll be watching and waiting to hear something this evening."
Thank you, Ms. Dewis. We have one person signed up. Ms. Paul?
If I could address the question and just really quickly-
For what purposes?
Just to provide an update. I actually spoke with city manager Kozel, and those recommendations, or at least an update, will be on the first agenda in March. Just so, you know, to, to address the, the question that was asked. So there'll be an agenda item on the, the first agenda in March regarding the, the status of the recommendations.
Okay. Okay, we have one person signed up. Jeffrey Myers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. Thank you very much for hearing from us this evening. I'm Jeff Meyer. I'm an Elgin resident, a member of the board for Elgin Classic Little League. I'm joined this evening by our board president, Julie Miller, Julie Miller, and by another board member, Josh Brockway. We're here to comment on the allocations that are made for the youth athletic facilities and maintenance of youth athletic facilities. We were one of the applicants this year, and unfortunately, we're not a recipient of any of the awards this year. We're not here to complain about that. We understand there are limited resources, and we understand that the need was great this year, and the commission or the committee and staff made the recommendations they felt were the most appropriate of the circumstances. We don't, we don't take issue with that. But we do want to impress upon you and maybe piggyback on the comments made by Council, Councilwoman Tish Powell, that realistically, the, the budget that's available for these facilities and maintenance and allocations to the organizations, it is not sufficient to meet the needs. As you know, from your own experience, costs are dramatically increased. When we bid these projects out, we have to ask for the bids to come in at prevailing wage because they're funded by public resources. That increases the cost of the projects, even if we have some donations of time. Our specific request this year to answer a question about, requests that were made that were not funded, last year we raised as an organization over $25,000 in contributions from businesses and community members. We used a significant portion of those funds to put down a down payment on a $40,000 piece of equipment that will be used to maintain and improve the fields for decades to come. Does laser grading, it could literally rebuild a field. Once you, you know, laser and it puts a layout out there, it's beyond my comprehension. It's above my pay grade. But that piece of equipment obviously needs to be protected. And our request was for funding for a facility structure that would have allowed us to, to do that. Maria and staff have found maybe an alternative for us because the Legion field's not being utilized. And so we might be able to meet that, that need this coming year. But we have significant expenses coming up. ADA compliance with paving, the restrooms, netting for the fields themselves to prevent balls from damaging vehicles and people. And that, we're not unique. This is uniform across all these organizations. And at the end of the day, these are your facilities. We want to be a good steward of them. We do what we can to raise funds, but we do require assistance from the city in helping maintain those facilities. We appreciate the support we've received in the past, hope to be able to receive some support again in the future. But please, when you are considering your budget, please take this all into account. And if you have funding available, please increase the funding so that they can make recommendations to help us do that part in partnership with you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to bids. We have a couple items. First item is number 23-0100, Police Facility Fire Alarm Replacement.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we award this bid to Iwire Technologies LLC in the amount of $181,970.
Second.
Move the second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. Item two is bid number 23-015, Hemmings LED Lighting Purchase.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we award this bid to Photo Proto Light Inc. in the amount of $99,885.
Second.
Move the second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. Item three is a suburban purchasing cooperative, contract, contract for the purchase and outfitting of 23 patrol and administrative vehicles for the Elgin Police Department.
Mayor, make the motion to award the bid to Curry Motors, the amount of $1,134,646.
Second.
Move the second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. Other business this evening, we have one item. It's a resolution approving the Cultural Arts Commission grants, grant recipients. Sorry.
Move approval. Second.
Move the second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved seven one. Consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move the second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Stefan? Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. Miscellaneous business.
Move approval.
Second.
Move the second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. Announcements, the next committee, the whole meeting will be Wednesday, March 8th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. The next regular meeting of the Elgin City Council will be Wednesday, March 8th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Move the second to adjourn. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned.